Okay, it looks like we're ready. But you're not sure, Chris?
Uh, we're ready, yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, City of Flemish Planning Commission Meeting is called the order. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, Darlene Rose. She's here, I can see her. Gary Connor.
Here.
Fiona Bernardini. She's also here, I can see her. Peggy Yoder.
Here.
Joseph Sullivan is absent. Van Hunzaker.
Here.
And we have Ex officio Ruth Cozy, myself Ashley Howe, and Chris Workman. Thank you.
Thank you. So our agenda tonight is limited to discussing of the comprehensive plan housing chapter. And then any announcements and staff updates. So no public hearing comments. Or um, any significant decisions to be made, except for how to move forward with the housing chapter, which is in itself quite significant at a high level. Mr. Workman, do you want to start off with a summary of where we're at and um, and the honest truth is I'm a little um uncertain as to how to move forward. I guess I will summarize in saying that we've heard a lot of great ideas from every planning commissioner and some thoughts submitted, and I don't feel like we're a long ways apart. But as far as writing the document, we've had a wide divergence of how to put the headings on on the sections of the chapter and what to start with and what our approach is. And so somehow we need to find a consensus to move forward. And that's kind of where we're at, so. Chris?
Then I'll, I'll jump in, I guess. I've been in a lot of meetings today, so my voice isn't very strong, so I apologize. I'll try to project. As I included in the memo for tonight, one of the strategies sometimes is to start with the end in mind. And so if we if we have a little bit better idea of the current housing policies that are good and in good shape, those that may need tweaked a little bit, and then those housing policies that we maybe just flat out disagree with, or that based on the housing needs analysis, we could say, yeah, it really doesn't support that current policy any longer. Uh, maybe an initial discussion on the existing housing policies in the comp plan. And some agreement there will help us and kind of work backwards from there on. You know, what to include as far as findings and background information. Um, and kind of narrative that's going to support those findings or support those policies that we're looking at. So unless anybody has a better idea, my recommendation would be to just look at those and I can pull those up on my screen and share them in the memo that I'd submitted. And maybe we can just get thumbs up, thumbs sideways, or thumbs down on whether each policy seems like it's still relevant, applicable, and supported by not only the housing needs analysis and the findings there, but also the opinions of the planning commission. So if that sounds good to everybody, I'll go ahead and share my screen. I'm seeing heads nodding, so I'll go ahead and proceed. I can probably blow that up just a little bit. So, yeah, this is the memo that went out, and I just listed the existing housing policies. There's nine of them. Uh, so just starting on the first one, City Flemish should, shall include an adequate supply for buildable residential land within the urban growth boundary in order to accommodate anticipated housing needs of of the planning period. Um, this is pretty boilerplate language. We've seen different versions of this, I think, in most of the um, the sample chapters that we've looked at from other communities. It's pretty vanilla, but it as a general policy, it seems to work, but uh, any opinions from the commission?
I, I guess I'd say that that's kind of a no-brainer one. Um, the various information people provided kind of on this topic um was all along those lines. It's just which kind of heading to put on it and which emphasis to put underneath it for any official statements. So I would say that that's a statement that can stand. I'd be surprised if anybody has any other things to say about it. It looks like we have hands up from actually a couple of people now. Why don't we? Darling, did you put your hand down on purpose?
No. I'm struggling with my.
Well, then Commissioner Rose, do you have something to say?
Um, yeah, when I went through these, I, I kind of, on each of the current housing policies, I kind of looked at where it would fit in. Um, the housing strategy that we received from Econ Northwest. And um, so I thought that um, number one would fit within policy one. So that's that was sort of my starting point.
Commissioner Yoder.
I pretty much said this, thought the same thing that, you know, the, the newest one where it says policy one or goal one, whatever we might want to um, to call it instead of a policy, it'd be a goal. Um, but as I was looking at it and um all of the building and stuff that we, that we have experienced and we are experiencing that we're going to experience, it makes me wonder how we have fulfilled that. You know, I think that might be something a little bit deeper that we need to look at with comes to the 2040 of how many homes that we're supposed to be able to supply um, of how close we are to, to being there. You know, um, the Echo Northwest said that we had forty-one acres of high density, you know, R three. And so that was um was in the area that was like in Mill Pond Crossing, that was residential, single residential homes. It's like, well, now it's not. So we actually have a pretty good supply of that. So I don't know how we want to address when we think that we've met that need. Um, like Darlene said, the ensuring adequate supply of land is available and serviced. Do we really have to address that we've met it? Or that we still need to meet it? But it's a little more truncated, you know, it's a little bit shorter, like Darlene said in the Echo Northwest one, policy one virtually fits policy one in our old one. Um, so I agree with Darlene, long, long sentence said, I, I agree with Darlene's statements is that, you know, yeah, it's good. We could even shorten it to be what the Echo Northwest states. Which is, you know, just ensure adequate supply of land is available and serviced.
Thank you. Counselor Cozy?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I believe this is, is essentially the requirement of Bergen's land use planning goal. One is, is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, again, there's, you know, there's a hundred different ways to say it, but yes, one of the goals is that there's an adequate supply of residential land to meet your twenty-year planning horizon. How exactly you phrase that and everything else um, is a little discretionary, but, but yes, this is a, a primary requirement for, to meet the state's uh the state's planning goals.
Peggy also raises an interesting point about whether or not we're meeting this goal. It would be interesting to revisit it maybe a five-year intervals and see, okay, this is what we were projected. Um, how much has been built in the period and how much land is left? To see what.
Another thing that older policy states is that um, there's a distinction made, and this is on page twenty-six of sixty-two of the packet that we were given a few weeks ago. There, um, it's necessary to make a distinction between housing that people might need, housing needs, and what the market will produce. Um, the housing market demand. You know, so that, that is something that probably should be revisited. Um, frequently, I would imagine, you know, how much do we need to, how much do we now need to really change, look at our changing our zones to allow for more um, R threes when we have forty-one acres of R three available? So.
Okay, so it sounds like general consensus is this is a good one. You know, we can wordsmith it a little bit, but overall this policy should stay. Um, so let's kind of keep moving through these because again, we can kind of come back. And number two, residential land shall be designated for either low, medium, or high-density housing on the plan. So we do that today. Our one, our two, our three.
Well, I have, I have a question about that. Is that a um, kind of a high-level requirement for it to be in those three categories, or would we maybe want to do other things in the future? Is this really a is that specificity appropriate for a comprehensive plan, or is that better left to implementation?
So the the state goal is that you're providing for housing of all types. Traditionally, that's been done through different levels of zoning, different densities of zoning. Um, but our zoning, like many cities of our size and even larger than our size, you know, limits it to two or three different zones. Uh, when you get into larger cities, it's not uncommon for them to get much more complicated in their residential zone. And each different zone is much more specific on what type of development can go into that zone designation. Um, because of our size and our geography and how we sit, it gets a little um, it gets a little difficult because one of, one of the other provisions of state land use planning is that you can't spot zone, right? So you're not going to say these three properties are this zone, and the lot next to it's going to be a different zone, and then the lot next to it's going to be a different zone. You you really try to zone by area or by region based on some similarities within that region. Um, but to look at expanding uh, you know, additional housing densities or additional housing types by zoning um, wouldn't be inappropriate. Just as example, I guess, one of the conversations the planner Pat and I have had continually over the last couple of years has been you know, where do you things like cottage clusters and, and higher density, different housing types fit? Do you just plug them into the R three? So you go in and change what's allowed in the R three multifamily? To allow for cottage clusters in an R three zone? Or do you consider an R four zone, for example, and within the R four zone, you would allow things like cottage clusters, tiny homes, that sort of development? And then you, you limit your R three to multifamily apartment complex, right? So then when you're looking at your zoning map, you can make determinations as to where would be most appropriate to have the large apartment complexes as opposed to maybe smaller college clusters, tiny home developments and that sort of bit. So you can do it either way, but that's just an example where maybe not being limited or constrained, only three zone types for residential. You may be able to expand that and, and open up some options that we don't currently have.
That was, that was exactly my question as to whether we want to tie our hands to not have more things without changing the comprehensive plan. Um, I think we've got hands from Rose Hunzaker and then Yoder. I've got that right. Okay, Commissioner Rose?
Okay, uh, well, again, when I looked at this one, um, it seemed to me like it, it, it would fit within policy two. Where we have um, you know, acting not to meet the city's identified housing needs. And then we list all those different, you know, accessory dwellings, manufactured housing, townhomes. And seems like that's all, that's all kind of um low, medium, and high, you know, it, it's kind of grouped it together in my mind. That's all.
Commissioner Hunzaker?
Yes, um, I just wanted to note with this particular one, I'm, I'm fine with how it says it. And I'm okay with maybe looking at even some additional uh uh, designations, but the, the one thing about this, it's important to know and remember that to a large degree, these various zones and how they end up getting built out has a large degree to do with how our water and sewer lines are placed. Uh, you need more, for more dense population, you need bigger pipes. And um, for less debt, you know, the opposite way. So it, you know, in terms of how we designate them and where they're at, we, we want to, one, I guess, maintain some consistency from what exists so that uh, we don't uh have to expand, you know, sewer lines all the way down to the sewer plant. Uh, because now we want to change our zoning to high desert, d- density residential. And, you know, it may not be able to be accommodated without enlarging all the pipes. For, for instance. Um, so I just want us to be careful as we work on this particular thing of the density to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Cheer.
As we look at the, um, it was mentioned, um, I think maybe by Chris of, you know, looking at maybe different um R three or going to an R four is I, I don't know how difficult it is for us, or if it's even possible with some of the uh like Harriet's Hiltons, those kind of things that we have throughout the town of I would imagine, I haven't looked them all up, I would imagine the zonings are kind of um, different. Maybe some of those homes are in R ones, and maybe some of them are in R twos. When the housing, how it's actually being utilized might fall into something that's completely different, shared housing, communal housing. Um, however you want to stress it. And I would imagine that the two large complexes that we already have, the Boulevard Apartments and the Oak Creek Apartments, are, are three. I don't have the map in front of me. I would imagine that they're already designated R three. That's correct, right?
The Oaks Briggs is actually a commercial zone. At the time, the commercial is not allowed for multifamily. It's an office residential zone. But the Boulevard Apartments was, uh, was industrial and they requested a rezone to R three. Yeah, so that's correct.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so I still don't know how we do, how we draw the line of what we've accomplished, or even if we are trying to distinguish a line, because this is going to be lasting for a long time. Um, depending on, uh, you know, the population growth, but it, of, of where we fit in right now with the amount of housing that we do have available, and whether it crosses over to um what the goal ten housing states that we, I believe we are meeting all of those, and I think Echo Northwest kind of, you know, points that out. But will we still meet it, you know, in the future, but we are, we are right now, so. Okay.
Counselor Cozy?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to ask um, if this statement should be amended to indicate that um, the zoning um, would reflect the, a com- would attempt to accommodate the anticipated housing needs. So it's not just a state that we're going to be zoned this way, but we're going to be zoned in such a way as uh, to attempt to accommodate proj- projected housing needs. Because as I recall, we have a surplus, I believe, of R one and not as much of others.
Yeah, um, I, in, in this, in this location, for the stuff that I advocated for, would you know, th- this language is kind of specific in that low, medium, and high density without really saying what we're trying to accomplish. And in, on this topic, I prefer the City of Redmond language where there's a couple of statements. One, the first statement is about developing clear and objective standards for the development of all types of needed housing. And identify opportunities to increase residential development through removing or lowering barriers to residential development. And then the second one is um, allow for and encourage wider range of types of housing. And meet the needs at all income levels in both existing neighborhoods and new residential areas. So I know that gets a little more um, complex, but I think it's more goal-oriented in what you're trying to accomplish with those zonings. And not that it has to be exactly that language, but I'm not real happy with this language because it, it ties our hands and it doesn't talk about what we're actually trying to accomplish.
Would you want to go so far as to state that um, additional zone types could be designated? Um, or could be added as needed?
We, we could.
I think either, either stated or more clearly implied, right, that housing types of all sorts and, and zoning of different types of, you know, zoning could be um, updated to reflect future needs and to allow for all, all types of, of housing or a more variety, you know, more, more varied uh, array of housing types.
Yeah. Uh, we've got Commissioner Hunzaker, then Yoder.
Oh, I, I guess on the second one there, I, I don't see that any different than the first uh, policy in that it's just saying we're going to have low, medium, and high density. Other places, we are going to are, are, are do say in our zoning ordinance is what, you know, what can be in a low, what could be in a medium, but what could be in a high. But it's just saying that we're going to at least have those three designations. And, and that I don't think it implies, you know, anything else. Um, so I mean, I, I'm fine with even what that says. Maybe underneath that to say maybe some of those things that uh, Gary is talking about. But I don't know, that, I guess, just that's my thought of it.
Commissioner Yoder?
I didn't, I must admit, Gary, I did not go online and look up um everything that, that you had said that you wanted under um, in the res- in the red um, the Redmond one. Um, I was kind of thought that maybe we would be supplied with some of those, the input that people were given that you gave, other than just the numbers and such. Um, but um, it, it seems to me with what you read, I can't make a real big distinction between what we already have on the policies between one and two. It, it's, what we have isn't quite so wordy. I guess, can you just elaborate a little bit why you see such a big distinction of what Redmond's has, other than that we say we need to have an attic supply and that we need to have low, medium, and high-density housing available? Um, what makes you feel so much more comfortable with the Redmond?
Well, I guess my thought is that the comprehensive, the purpose of the comprehensive plan is to talk about what you're trying to accomplish within the city. And what I'm seeing here for one and two is just that we're going to provide buildable land and we'll zone it differently. It doesn't say what we're trying to accomplish. Um, the goal in policies for the Redmond for this, it's specifically stating that they're trying to encourage residential development. And that they're trying to encourage residential development at all income levels in both existing and new neighborhoods, which is, which is kind of a big statement about what the city's trying to accomplish. Whereas right now there's nothing in our policies that say what we're trying to accomplish. Maybe we're trying to accomplish keeping Flemish exactly the way it is with exactly the same level of income that's capable of purchasing the housing that we already have. I mean, maybe that's our goal. It doesn't say one way or the other. Um, whether we need to or not in a comprehensive plan, I suppose, is a matter of debate as well. So it's, it's a little, it's a lot confusing, I guess, in my mind, but it seems like we're not quite answering the mail or providing the direction that we need for the next stage of developing our zoning codes. Um, and, and I think it would be better if the comprehensive plan had a little bit of consensus about what we are trying to accomplish in the city.
With one of the steps that we need to address, um, where are we at? With, with this, are we really going to encourage more residential land? Are we really going to encourage certain things, given the fact of how many changes have already happened since Echo Northwest did their analysis?
Say, yeah, that's our job. Commissioner Hunzaker?
Uh, look, uh, number five, I guess, addresses what you were talking about with Redmond. Maybe not exactly as eloquently, but.
Well, and, and really, that's just saying low-cost housing. Um, whereas the one from Redmond, it, it really talks about that full spectrum. So.
And.
Okay. Let's keep moving through. Again, I think, again, general consensus that number two's got good information. Maybe we expanded a little bit. Uh, but again, maybe as we read through the other policies, we'll see some, some areas where there's some, you know, where it repeats a little bit. Or, or maybe not. So I think that's a good starting point for number two. Uh, for number three, it's housing trends within the city and urban growth boundary shall be monitored and evaluated in order to modify policy when necessary. Um, so again, I, you know, I've been here for eight years and two years ago, we started updating the comprehensive plan, and, and here we are looking at updating policies right now. This is a, it's a big task for, and, and Flemish is not unique in this. Any, any city that's taking on updating the comprehensive plan. Um, the staff kind of moans and everybody kind of groans and like, oh, it's just such a long tedious process to go through. Um, so updating policy is a, a bit of a heavy lift, so I don't want to minimize that too much. As you've all experienced, uh, this isn't easy work to do, and it's not really efficient, and it just takes a lot of time. Um, I guess the question here is, is this sufficient about monitoring? Is it sufficient about what modifying policy means? Um, what are your thoughts?
Commissioner Yoder, and then Hunzaker.
Well, um, I think some things can be combined, but on, on three, it, it almost seems very, very obvious. Um, or almost kind of redundant to some of the stuff that's already been said, and that um, do we really, uh, policies can be modified at any time. We've been modifying or, or changes can be made, maybe not the policy itself can be, can be changed at, at any sign. And since we're, since we're talking about policies, so to have it be in the policy that we're going to talk about moni- changing the policy, it, it just seems kind of odd to me. So I must be either missing something or just need some clarification because that's exactly what we're doing, is looking to modify the policy. I know that we're looking at the whole comprehensive plan, but um, we've, we've got ordinances added and frequently. So does it even need to be there, I guess, is what I'm thinking? But.
Commissioner Hunzaker?
Well, I guess, when I, as I read that, this one, I look at it like what actually Peggy, you were saying. And um, somebody else mentioned it. I can't, I'm not thinking right now, but about monitoring the housing and, you know, how things develop. And if we need to, it's saying we should look at that. So in case we need to make some changes, you know, in that, within that twenty-twenty-one, twenty-forty-one planning period, and it's just saying that we'll monitor it. Of course, like Chris is saying, it's kind of hard to monitor it and actually make changes. But it's saying that we will monitor it, so in case we do need to cha- make any changes. And I, I guess, I think that's what you were concerned about that we might need to do.
And do we need, do we need a policy that says that we're going to look at the policy? I mean, would we really not look at things, if changes to be made, unless it, if it wasn't written in there? If it wasn't written in there?
Oh, I I, yeah, I mean, I suppose that's that's true, but I mean. This, I guess, saying that we're gonna do that kind of pushes you to actually do it. I guess my, that would be my thought.
Commissioner Bernadine.
Yeah, it's what you're saying, Peggy, I think. Similar to the number one. You know, do do these things really need to be in there? Or are, is it sort of obvious that will fix things that are wrong? And I have those same questions going through these, trying to decide what to cut and what to include. Cause in all of these, for all of these cities, some of the things seem. You know, so obvious as to not really warrant saying. So the question is, how many of those do we, nonetheless, there. They might be obvious, but they're also as a planning commission and as a housing document, what we want to have. Stated as an obvious fact, we need to plan to have enough housing. So I don't know, I mean, maybe it's not necessary, so to speak, but it also doesn't seem. You know, there's not that much. If we take that line of thinking, the only thing that this document will have will be changes that we're making. You know, to an extent, we need sort of a bedrock of like. What this is about. The only thing that I think might make this more, a little more. Particular is if we mentioned how often we monitor and evaluate. Because that's what I was wondering is, you know, well, how frequently will this evaluation take place? Because I do think it's important. To stay on top of and say, okay, we have a need for more low income housing. How are we doing? Are we achieving that? That goal or are we not? And if this document is only being revised every twenty years, is that frequently enough?
I'd say not.
Well, uh, Eco Northwest put something very similar in. The housing strategy at objective two point two, it says periodically evaluate Flemeth's residential zoning code to identify their barriers. To residential development and where appropriate, make changes to the development code to lower development barriers. So it's. Very similar and it's in the document. See, it seems, it seems like a good idea to me to include it.
And, uh, Gianna, did you have something else?
Nope, sorry.
Commissioner Cossey, no, Counselor Cossey, that is so hard to get right every time. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I can share some of my nicknames, but I don't think I will. Let's see, the one thing I wanted to mention, I know that this commissioner requested several updates. To the housing needs analysis when it was completed and the thought was that this. Um, analysis should be updated every five years or as needed. So. Rather than updated at this point or whenever it was requested. Um, the council decided to postpone it until a five year interval. Had arrived or there was a need, so I think, I think it is important to have this in. And I think it's important, the flexibility in this statement is also important, it's as as needed or as necessary. Because if there is a developer who comes in. And says, you know, I want to build twenty acres worth of housing. Um, something really substantial. Then I think we would want to step back, have that policy updated. And revisit that development in the context of a current policy. So, those are my thoughts.
Any other thoughts on number three? Those are all good points. Let's look at number four. City of Flemish shall continue to utilize the Uniform Building Code. In order to provide health and safety standards for new housing units.
Um, having just talked for five minutes about how we need to have all these in here, this is one that struck me as unnecessary. I mean. This is one I think we could get rid of. I mean, it's. I mean, obviously. Our code is to provide health and safety standards. I don't know.
I agree. I I agree, we have, we're working on on building codes, you know, we have, we have our codes. That were, that we've got for us. It it, I, yeah, I I agree that that is something that we really just don't need. I can't see how. There's a lot of things I don't see in the future. I don't know if something can come back and says, well, you don't have. Anything that we have to provide health and safety standards, so. But we do. In our, in our code, so I don't know if that is something that's really need to be. It's not, it's only two sentences. I mean, all of these could just kind of be capped if we really wanted, but is it really necessary? Compared to what the the strat, the Flemeth, the Echo Northwest strategy, they gave us four goals, four policies. Um, that are a little more streamlined than this, so.
Without this statement, without this statement, we have other things that would require us to comply with the Uniform Building Code. Is that correct, Chris? No, the Uniform Building Code is like very specific engineering criteria for the strength of buildings and. Wind speed that has to be resisted and all those sorts of things that we don't regulate. Yeah, yeah, the Uniform Building Code is the state Uniform Building Code, it's. The requirements that are the, our building inspectors reference when they're reviewing plans for structures. So it's it's less to do with our municipal development code and really it's about the. The building code that that again regulates. Building construction standards.
So what would happen if a town didn't abide by the Uniform Building Code?
A city can have more. Can have their own, if they want things that are more stringent or more or more strict. Then they can do that, but it can't be a lesser standard than the Uniform Building Code. You think of cities like Portland and, you know, larger cities that have teams of people that want to feel special, they create their own building code. Uh, with additional provisions, I guess, up and above the minimum state standards. So, I mean, it's a blanket statement. It 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 kind of works, but it. If at the very least, maybe we need to find what the Uniform Building Code is, because that obviously isn't very clear. What the Uniform Building Code is, so maybe the the state of Oregon Uniform Building Code or or reference out a bit more clearly.
Like the statewide Uniform Building Code?
Yeah, I think it's just acknowledgement that we're gonna ensure that. The homes that are built are built to. Standards, right, that in order to protect health and safety of new residents coming in.
Well, now I think it's important.
Well done.
Gianna, did you have something new?
Well, I probably, Chris just may have answered that. I was gonna say. When they were talking about taking it out, I was gonna say, is there something else? That it could be and what I guess, as I understand what Chris, yeah, you could actually make it more stringent. So I guess it, to me, it seems like it is important to have it there and maybe add that, you know, the Oregon State Uniform Building Code. And, you know, and then that designates. What, how we're gonna do that, do that part or.
And it does get updated every so often. Sometimes more regularly than others, but as new standards come in, new building types. You know, new building materials come in, there's new standards that are approved for those different building materials. So think of like the. Cross laminated timber and and different things like that, where you've got these new building materials that come in. They have to do all the testing and de- and develop what are the safety. And regulatory standards for those new building materials. And so the uniform code gets updated regularly as these new building materials and and different. Building standards come into place. Um, so it wouldn't be appropriate to cite like a specific. Date or specific chapter, verse, whatever, but just, I think to more clearly identify it's the state, state of Oregon Uniform Building Code would be sufficient and. Might get rid of some uncertainty there and what it's referring to. Okay, any other comments on four? Pretty straightforward. So number five, uh, the city of Flemish shall encourage the development. Of low cost housing in order to meet the housing needs of elderly, low income and handicapped persons.
Yeah, I I dislike the wording on this one. Particularly because there's a presumption that. Elderly and handicapped persons are low income, which is not always the case. I think if we simply said. The city of Flemish shall encourage the development of low cost housing in order to meet the housing needs of low income individuals. Or, or just, you don't even need that last part. We should encourage the development of low cost housing. But on that same. Thread Monroe. On Monroe's policy. Two point three. Uh, specifically addresses the needs of. Older adults and people with disabilities by saying that we need to support a diverse supply of affordable, accessible housing. To meet the needs of older adults and people with disabilities in centers and other places which are in close proximity to services and transit. So that that's sort of a a separate thing, but I really liked that point. Because that is practical, folks who have hard, a hard time getting around. It obviously makes more sense for them to live closer to services and transit. And I think it's a great idea for a city to specify that that is a, as a specific need. Um, but I think that's different than low income.
Peggy.
So you think the the wording of um, policy of policy five in our current. Um, can be kind of changed enough, so it's because I see what you mean. It's, we should not assume that all elderly and handicapped persons are low income and that they need our help. Um, I don't, or that they need some sort of subsidy subsidized subsidized help because. I really, and five and eight to me are kind of the same thing, they, I think they could be easily joined. On our policy, on the current policy. But unless. Going through the Mill Pond, uh, meeting that we just held. Clearly, the so-called affordable housing that are going to be built do not fall into the category of what the Echo Northwest low. Um, affordable housing consists of, which is around two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per house. Well, that's, that's. We're not gonna make that unless we have some sort of subsidy or some sort of. Income restrictive. Housing, which I would be all for income restrictive housing. The developer wouldn't be able to come in or the. The person wouldn't be able to come in and buy the homes for, um, low income home, which is what Levi says that he's after. Because they wouldn't get the criteria, so. I like, I like those, I like five and eight, I just think that they could be worded, worded in such a way and I wouldn't mind combining them. Well, that's it.
I, uh, like what Gianna had to say about Monroe's language there, but. I I agree that we could modify it a little bit. I don't see the need for parts of it. But I would, I mean, if I was writing the whole thing from scratch, I would also include. Um, some of the things from Redmond where it talks about allowing for housing at all income levels. In existing and new residential areas and. Encouraging the lower income or. It, I think we, I I want to be careful about the words low income because what's used is affordable. Cause I think we're not just talking about the actual low income housing, but affordable housing for for median incomes is a huge issue, so. Even some of those housing prices. That are in the Mill Pond Crossing Development are are better than what's. Been on the open market by and large, so I I like. If if we're gonna talk about low income, I like talking about affordable housing and I like talking about allowing all types because I wouldn't want to be. The city of Flemeth that only allows affordable and below. Um, I wouldn't want to say that you, we have no zoning. That's the higher end and I wouldn't want to, and I would want to say that we do want to encourage. Um, the more affordable, so. Anyhow, I agree with Gianna. Monroe sounds pretty good, but I would add some words in to make it more comprehensive. Ben, did you just put a?
I just did. Kind of, I don't, maybe this is what Darlene was gonna say, but on the. Proposed by Echo Northwest, policy number three. I guess to me, that that very well looks. Addresses what you were just talking about, Gary, and it it doesn't talk about the. Disabled and elderly, uh, which I, I'm a, I, I. In reference to that, I do like the Monroe one for that part of it. But I I think that policy three there. Would be. Better than the number five that we have or in the current one. Because it, you know, if if we remember this. Low income part of it. I guess that, you know, that the work that Echo Northwest did. I mean, I think this, that was kind of a, one of the big issues that we need to. Address and. I guess I thought this number three, you know, tackled it pretty well.
You mean policy three, right, Ben? Not. Not the three that we're looking at on the screen.
Oh, no, 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 the policy three that Echo or Echo Northwest did. On page four. Right, that document.
Strategy, I don't really have anything to add except for that I, um, I'm in agreement with Gianna. I liked the Monroe language. Much better.
So Chris, did we give you enough notes to do something with?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, it sounds like. Nobody's really said this other than we've been saying it. It sounds like really we're splitting number five into two, so we're. We want some language in a policy that addresses. Elderly, handicap, people that want accessibility. Closer to areas where their services provided, but that's one policy. But then the other policy that we've talked about more is the the income level of housing and that that should be mixed, that we should encourage the mix. And that we need to make sure that we're providing housing specifically for low, you know, the low income households, medium. You know, the low to moderate income, uh, housing stock. Kind of focus on, so I'm kind of splitting five into two different ones, rather than in this case they combine and assume that they're all the same. It's very clear that they're not, so. Is is that resonating with folks to split that up and look at maybe two separate policies to address those two different issues?
Sounds good.
Number six, oh, Gianna had another comment.
Really quick, I I'd really like to see the word handicapped scrapped, that's. You know, let's just say that's dated and leave it at that, uh, elderly as well is. Issued these days.
Yeah, no, we can use.
To be great, but.
Or we can just talk about accessibility.
Aging, aging population, that's what Monroe says. Aging aging population. That's what Monroe says.
I'm aging. I'm getting older every day. But yeah, we'll look for appropriate language. I I think that's that's a good point. Thank you, John. Uh, number six, either annexation or delayed annexation must occur in order for the city. Zoning to apply to residential lands currently in the urban fringe. So maybe I'll introduce that just a little bit, and that tells me that this probably isn't clear enough standing on zone, but. Um, this is essentially saying. If you're going to do a subdivision or partition and you're in the urban growth boundary, not in the city. As before, you're going to be allowed to partition or subdivide. You need to annex into the city, so you're not going to get subdivisions. And lots splitting out. Outside outside of city limits. Um, that's going to be required to be inside cities. This kind of happens anyway, because in order to get. Water and sewer service, you have to be inside city limits. And one of this, one of the county's requirements for. Uh, sanitary sewers that if you've got sanitary sewer within, I'm not sure what the radius hundred, I think it's three hundred feet even. If you're within three hundred feet of existing sewer, you've got to connect into that. So there's some other provisions that kind of force this anyway. Um. But to me, number six isn't very clear the way that it's. Written in and of itself. Um. So maybe it's still a reference to. The need to annex into the city before you're allowed to subdivide, maybe just more clear language. Um. Yeah. I'm not sure. Your thoughts?
Counselor Causy.
Um, I just wanted to ask when a delayed annexation would occur? And it seems to me like this would be addressed in um the municipal code.
Yeah, and I've I've not done a lot of delayed annexations. I understand that there used to be. Some tax implications with. When a property was developed. Either prior to coming into the city or after the coming into the city and how it was taxed. And there was substantial benefit. To a property owner for getting a delayed annexation. Developing and then coming into the city after the properties already developed. I believe that's moot now because of new regulations and new changes, so I don't think some of those benefits are there. So. You know, there was a big push several years ago and I'm. Going back well beyond my history um and local government, but. There was an era where it was uh when this was gonna sunset and those benefits were gonna leave in the city did a lot of delay annexations. And it was actually promoting them and encouraging people to get a delayed annexation approved. So that they could develop their property and then later come into the city. Uh, and tap on so. My experience with delayed annexations is that um. They're they're pretty limited to when you're going to get some benefit. The only time that I've looked at a delayed annexation to benefit a property owner was. When they were wanting to. Um, only annex a portion of their property into the city. Um, and so they wanted to do a partition and then annex a piece of their property in the city. And the county's planning rules wouldn't allow for them to partition without going through a much more extenuous. Application to show all of the future partitions that could also happen. So all the future partitions. And that that was very onerous for this lot. And so the workaround was to have a delayed annexation agreement with the city. Where the entire property would be approved for annexation. Part of it would be delayed and it would come in over time. But short of that, I've just not had a lot of experience where a delayed annexation really benefit a property and we just we just don't come across it very often. You got a couple hands up, Gary?
Yeah, Dan.
Um, yeah, Chris, what? What Chris was describing is correct. Uh, it used to be you. When a property is brought into the city. The value of that is added to the. I can't remember the right term, but. The the tax, the taxing value. Assess value, right? So it was very common to do a delayed annexation. Let them develop and then one once they're developed and bring them in and, you know, instead of a. You know, a blank piece of property, you have a house on it or or whatever else they're building on it. And then you get that total value instead. I my suggestion would be is to take that part out. Um, as far as. The delayed annexation.
Peggy.
Um, yeah, as I was reading that, pretty much you both of you guys have pretty much said said what I had written down that is I just wrote down. It doesn't seem to pertain anymore. Especially the delayed re- the delayed annexation and it sounds like from what Chris had just said. That the annexation issue may have already kind of been um. Fixed. In in other in other right or in other writings that we that we have, I just. I just wondered that we should just strike that. If not, strike it, then we just strike where it talks about delayed annexation and just say. Annexation must incur for the order for the city zoning to apply.
Yeah, and I I don't want to confuse things too much either, but the city does have an urban fringe agreement with Benton County. Where it's got this provision, other similar provisions in place where. There's a uh an understanding between the county and the city that if a property is in their growth boundary. They want to develop, they want to, you know, um. Put a house on it, they want to divide. There's an agreement in place already on who that goes through, whether it goes through the county for an approval or goes to the city for an approval, what that looks like. Again, I just don't see us getting caught up in this and. I can run it by the city attorney first just to make sure we're not removing something that we want, but. My understanding of this section is it's really not a necessary provision any longer. I think. Again, I I think it's moved with some other change.
Where is that agreement? Where would that agreement be um?
Addressed somewhere on the bookshelf behind me there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so it's it's somewhere in writing. It's not just not a handshake with somebody in the Benton County, so it seems.
Yeah, no, in fact, I and I should joke, we just updated it. Um, the Benton Benton County reached out to us, their planners. Reached out, they had a few provisions and things they wanted to update, change. So we just went through that maybe. Oh, since Pat got here, so maybe just over a year ago or so, a year and a half ago that we just updated some of the language there. I. Double check, I believe that came to this group. It might have just went to the city council because it was a. Inner kind of interagency agreement, but. I double check. Anyway, it did get updated recently. It's we refer back to it when an issue comes up. Um, again, usually it's a property inside their growth boundary. Outside of city limits, it has development plans and reaches out to either the county or the city. And then we pull up the document to see which jurisdiction is going to oversee the the application.
Gianna.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate uh having Vans sort of institutional knowledge. To help us sometimes. Um, it's very useful having someone. Who's been around and who can clarify certain things. That the rest of us don't really know what they refer to, so thank you.
Aging population, John.
Thank you, Peggy.
Here, here.
I'm right up there, man, so.
No, I know. Oh, sorry. Can I add? I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand again. There was one last point I was gonna make and it's more, I guess it's more of a question for Chris. And I I know we used to, we used that term urban fringe. Is that really anything different that than urban growth boundary? Or is that actually beyond urban growth boundary? And if so. Is that the right word verbiage to have there?
That's the term that the county refers to it as. So it's probably coming from some county. Language. Um. But. Yes, it is limited to property within the urban growth boundary. If the urban growth boundary in the city limits are the one and the same, so you're on the very. You know, the very edge of the city property line and it also happens to be the urban growth boundary line. Anything outside of that, the city is not going to have any say in any way because it's all counting. So when you're talking about. This interagency collaboration and working together, it's strictly within the urban growth area of this city.
Does it also apply to land within the urban growth boundary that's? Far away from the city limits or is it just property that's adjoining city?
Yes, it's not just adjoining. Anything under the growth boundary is considered that urban friend. So again, from the county's perspective, urban fringe means it's somewhere near urban area. Or within an urban growth boundary of an of a city within the county.
I guess my I thought it seems inappropriate to include this one because it's really talking about something that is truly the county's. Realm to regulate.
I think this references when the when that property receives city zoning. Right, so. Again, I I don't know if. If this is trying to prevent somebody from claiming they want. Low density city of Flometh, low density residential zoning applied to them so that they can build a house. When the county zoning in the refringe of the county zoning may be. You know, urban residential with a five acre minimum, right? So. Again, what to me, what this is trying to prevent is you live on. Three acres, you want to put a house on your or you have three acres inside their growth boundary. You want to put a house on it. And so you apply to the city for. Uh, a low density residential zoning of minimum seven thousand square feet. But you're still outside of city limits. And so this essentially says the city can't put. A city's own designation on your property until you're actually annexed into the city. Or you have a delayed annexation to come into the city. Again, it's just, I just don't think it's applicable anymore.
But but isn't that a decision that's ultimately the county's, not the city's? Because it is county property, not city property.
It's county jurisdiction, but yeah, depending what goes in that urban fringe agreement on who oversees that application. I guess this would be about where the city could say, well, per our policies, we can't designate you. Anything other than your current. County zoning designation because you've not annexed into the city yet. And and maybe that's when the city leaned on this provision, but. Again, let me double check with the city attorney, make sure I'm not missing anything, but. This may be one that can come out now that we're not handling annexations and delayed annexations the way we used to. Uh, number seven, any other any other last comments? I don't want to cut anybody off. Number seven, the city of Flumash will continue to participate and seek cost effective means. To address its housing program on a regular basis.
Regional. What it says.
On a regional, what did I say, regular? On a regional basis, sorry. I said regular, it made me think right back to the previous one we were talking about.
Yeah. I don't understand what this is trying to say.
Um, well, I sat in a meeting for an hour and a half today with that was sponsored by the Council of Governments. Cascade West Council Governments. Uh, they've applied for and received a grant. To look at housing on a regional level, so they're talking to Lincoln County. Benton County and Lynn County, and so we had city managers and other housing practitioners. In the meeting, talking about um, talking with a consultant that they've hired to do an analysis. Uh, city of Flometh is one of four cities that volunteered to look to be looked at and actually do a code audit. Um, we're delaying our code on a little bit till we get new housing policies in place. So they're doing Sweet Home, Millersburg. And I forget the the fourth one, and then Flometh will be last. Um. But it was a very interesting conversation, looking at our statistics, looking at our housing policies. And what we'll be getting from that consultant is kind of as a region, what are some? Kind of more general policies that we can do as we're looking at housing. They really don't hold any teeth other than that the different cities within the region can then look at those policies and look to, you know, influence their current. Comprehensive plan or their current. Development code to try to address some of those regional policies. Um, but again, this is just a nod to that collaborative effort. Um, housing isn't specific to Flometh. When there's a housing need and housing demand or a housing surplus, it's generally. At a region level, much bigger than just an individual city.
Peggy.
Um, this is it. This was a ordinance. That was almost twenty years ago. And I was just wondering, do we have? Do we have anything we could point to where that has? Work that we can say, well. This is what we were referring to when we built this area or that we did this area. Do we have anything like that that we can? Probably say we've achieved number seven by looking at this over here.
Yeah, I'd have to pull the ordinance and look and see if there's some. Recitals in the ordinance that gave some type of uh. You know, background on why the ordinance was being considered. So I can look into that a little bit. I guess the notion going forward though is. As a general policy in the city, do we want to be collaborative? In our approach to housing and working with other jurisdictions and working with the county, working with the cog on. Looking at policy. Um, patterns and projections, et cetera. It seems to make sense to me, but.
Gianna.
Um, okay, well, this is one that made no sense to me. Chris, it sounds like this is is actually useful. Um, to you at least. Um, so if that's the case, if this, it sounds like this is something that. Maybe we could clarify a little bit and just from a grammatical perspective, it doesn't make sense the way it's written. The city of Philomath will continue to participate. In what? Like it, it needs to be clarified here. I don't. Um. Yeah, conceptually it makes sense, but linguistically it does not.
Agreed. Man.
Uh. Yeah, as Chris mentioned about the cog. Every so often and I wouldn't. This was just after I was gone and it. Excuse me. From being mayor that. I I think they probably were getting ready to do some. Studies. To look at it on a more regional basis in terms of housing. Uh, it was. I know back in that day. The the thing was, well, everybody drives from uh. Lynn County over to Oregon State University. I mean, that's more obviously simplistic statement, but. A lot of people do and they still do. And the idea at least. Back then was to see if. They could figure out how to. You know, move people over here if that's where they're gonna work at instead of driving back and forth and at the time, of course. And it may still be that way is that it's cheaper housing over in Lynn County. And and they look at that. That's what they look at is that type of information. To to Peggy's comment, I I don't know that. Even the studies that they did back then. I don't think you probably could point to something that. It made a difference here in Flometh.
Ruth.
Yeah, I just. It seems to me that what Chris, what you just stated a moment ago was made. Complete sense. Um, but it seems to me that all three of these statements could be combined into one. Indicating that we will work collaboratively with other entities. Um. But whoever they might be in order to achieve these things. Um. That I'm not sure any of these are terribly clear.
Yeah, Chris.
So just for background, I did pull up the ordinance. Um, in fact, I can share it real quick. It's got a little language here for the. Now I'm gonna have to print it off and include it in the pack up for tonight, but so be it. Um, so this is coming on the heels of the requirement that the city had for periodic review. Of the comprehensive plan. Um. It 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 used to be that D L C D was a little more. It 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 used to be that DLCD was a little more stringent about cities being required to do their periodic review. That's fallen off somewhat now, and we kind of talked about that a couple of years ago when we started down this road, but um, the periodic review actually formed a committee. They took about a year and a half. They looked through the conference pen and they made updates in order to bring the comprehensive plan at the time kind of up to snuff with the state's requirements. And so as you read through these um, statements, um, if you'll recall and reading through the the city's current housing policy, that all of that background work, that housing needs analysis, so to speak, it was done was done as a regional housing needs analysis. It wasn't that the city Flemish hired a consultant. It was that the region hired a consultant. I think it might have been at the either the county level, or it might have been even at the cog level, double check. Um, and so it was done in a kind of collaborative approach that the region was going to do the study, and then everybody within the region was able to then go and update uh, the housing portion of their comprehensive plan, as well as the economic portion of it and and the other. So what followed? Um, and again, I'm just reading through on this, on the model code, what followed then was all these different sections, the ec- economic policies were updated. And then here are the housing policies that were added, number seven, number eight, number nine. So these are in a direct, you know, direct response to this updated periodic review that the city under what twenty years ago back in two thousand and three? So that's a little bit of history, just in some kind of some quick digging. Um, so obvi- I mean, to me, it's obvious that these three policies that were added were probably recommended policies that came out of that regional um, housing needs analysis that was completed. Similar to the Eco Northwest strategic, you know, the recommendations coming from Eco Northwest that it looked at, these probably came from that consultant to say, here's some policies that you should really have in your comprehensive plan to update them. Is that helpful?
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Peggy.
Well, so is that ordinance even viable now? Or is that just that one for the history books? Looks like it was fourteen pages.
That's still in effect, so it it's still gonna show all the different uh, pull back a bit. So, yeah, I mean, once he's got adopted, they get pulled into the plan. So there's parks and pedestrian ways and so all kinds of changes that were made. So, yeah. So approved in September two thousand and three. And those changes get incorporated in the comprehensive plan. So when we will do the same thing when we settle on policies. That's the way that we'll actually make the change in the comprehensive plan is the city council will pass an ordinance, very similar to the one we just looked at. And it'll be the, you know, update to the housing policy of the city of Flemish. Um, it's exactly what the city council's looking at. Here in a couple of weeks, well, yeah, in a couple of weeks, in March, they'll be looking at an ordinance that adopts the changes to chapter one of the comprehensive plan that we've just done. So it's through the ordinance that those changes are officially made, and it'll be standing until it gets replaced by something else.
Thank you.
So I guess back to this one, does anybody have any specific concerns about how this is worded or any maybe recommendations on what's missing or what could add clarity?
Ben?
Well, I had put my hand up to say um, I was I I liked the idea of actually putting the three of them together. Uh, but I do agree that the wording is is pretty poor, but I I guess if you, the the point of these is to uh, you know, that the city of Flemish will continue to participate with on a regional basis or some term like that to a- address these issues. Seems like it would, you know, help make it, you know, explain it better.
Maybe collaborate with regional partners or collaborate with other municipalities or yeah, some type of other the cost effective mean seems like a dope brainer. I mean, we typically do that to me. That's kind of an added sentence to add sprinkles on top when you already got whipped cream. So I don't know that's necessary, but uh, and then I I'm not sure about the language about the housing program, we're we're establishing housing policies. But I I think the the word choice is important there because I I the to me, this refers to a housing program that we're not really establishing, we're establishing housing policies.
Yeah, I think that's the right word.
Peggy, had something else on this?
Yeah, I just, so what if it is already in an ordinance, seven twenty, that's standing and in and in effect? Um, why is it listed here just to bring people's attention that it is in that ordinance? That was almost twenty years ago? Or is it just redundancy of something that's already in the ordinance to make it easy that we have this ordinance, so we need to follow it? Is that is that the main reason why it would, why it was even originally in there? Or why we would keep it?
No, the the ordinance is just the tool that was used in order to update the comprehensive plan, so um, the, yeah, the I don't know how else to say it other than just to repeat what I just said. So that's the tool, right? In order to change the comprehensive plan, you can't just vote to approve a new plan or vote to approve new language. You put that new language in the ordinance and the city council passes the ordinance. That's the, that's the mechanism by which the conference pen was updated twenty years ago. So the intent was to have it show up and be updated in the comprehensive plan the way it lays out now. So it's not repetitive. It's it's the way it's intended to be there. Again, until it gets replaced or updated by a new ordinance that says this will now be the new language in the comprehensive plan, which is what we're kind of working towards at this point. So what I'm hearing, I'm gonna hand up, I guess what I'm hearing is we can wordsmith this one a little bit, but I'm not hearing many opposed to working with other cities and regional partners, et cetera. So we just need to maybe tweak the wording on this one a little bit. Other aspects of this that are missing, I I kind of poo-pooed the uh, seek cost effective means to do that is an important element for anybody or I don't want to overly speak for anybody, so. Okay, I'm seeing heads shaking back and forth saying no, so, okay. Um, let's go to number eight. We got two more. Then again, we can talk a little more high level on these. Uh, city flow will continue to elevate various mechanisms. That's wording horrible, to stabilize or reduce the cost of housing, particularly in relation to income levels. So I I have a little bit hard time with continue to evaluate various mechanisms to stabilize or reduce cost of housing. There's gotta be an easier way to say that.
Understandable.
And more specific.
Yeah. And Gianna's got her hand up here.
Um, does she? I'm not seeing her at all.
There was a physical hand.
Oh, physically. If you, if you, if you raise your electronic hand, you pop up to the top of my screen.
Oh, sorry. I'll use my electronic hand.
Or or you could speak out loud and raise your physical hand, you also.
Okay. Um, this is, the city will continue to evaluate blah, blah, blah. Have we been doing this? I mean, I think conceptually I like this one. I think it's important to um, to evaluate what we're doing to reduce the cost of housing. I'm just wondering if we have been doing this. Have we been using various mechanisms to stabilize or reduce the the cost of housing? I mean, given the fact that we have a hundred percent discrepancy between income levels and housing costs right now, we're certainly not succeeding, but have we been um, evaluating this?
Well, to be fair, that's statewide, right? And really nationwide, so we're we're in good company with the problem.
We're not.
Well, we're in bad company, I guess, but uh, I think when you're looking at various mechanisms, I I don't want to take a defensive stance, but to me, I think we need to define, you know, what types of various mechanisms are we talking about? Do we want to be specific? I mean, we've looked at lowering STCs, we've looked at um, rezoning, we've looked at, you know, everything from landscape provisions and other things that maybe make it not necessarily more difficult, but more, you know, more stringent for developments coming in. I think Mr. Sullivan had argued we've made it more difficult for some types of development to come in because we've raised some standards or implemented some standards that weren't there before. But yeah, to me, this just isn't clear enough or maybe specific enough when you just talk about, you know, various mechanisms. It's just so broad, I guess. So were there any examples of language that kind of addresses us? I mean, I get the concept that you want to continue to be looking for ways to reduce the cost of housing. Are there examples in some of the other samples that we looked at where they've provided some language that would cover this type of policy?
Yeah, Redmond has some super specific things along those lines. Whether that's what we want or not, I'm not sure, but it's um, it's specific and actionable. Ruth, did you lowered your hand?
Yeah, I did. I was just going to point out the development, the six habitat homes that we that have been built here in town. And actually, the Mill Pond Crossing development itself is, you know, a below market development, so. And um, the Harriet's Housing Peggy mentioned earlier. You know, I don't know to what extent. I know, I'm sure the city was involved or has been involved with all of those to some degree. Um, but there are things that have occurred here in town that really do try to address housing.
Man.
Yeah, uh, the work that Echo Northwest did, if you read through uh, objectives or policy three all through there, that does all those different things that that one sentence suggests that we do. Uh, and that and it also goes goes into four, which is also uh, identifying funding to support the low income. So that that whole section, two, two or three pages is is full of the answers to number eight.
Okay, so look to number three, then what was the section in Redmond, Gary?
Ten dash three. Or under goal free. But it's a ten dash three dash one dash two and dash three.
Can you read that for us?
Um, I'll give you a summary. So ten dash three dash one is support development of government subsidized low income housing through partnering with nonprofit for profit and governmental developers of low income affordable housing. Dash two is development of government subsidized low income housing and affordable market rate housing by providing density bonuses and other incentives that support development of affordable housing, including entry level ownership units. And then dash three is development, support development of all types of multifamily affordable housing market rate or government subsidized affordable through use of tools to lower development or operational costs to make the development process simpler or faster.
Okay, so those are some good places to look for maybe some more clarifying language, kind of vet that out a little bit further.
Something to replace the various mechanisms.
Yeah. Define it better, yeah.
Peggy.
So when we, when we first started talking about this a few um, weeks ago, I believe that it was kind of um, decided upon by the majority that we wouldn't really be so much talking about the Flemish housing strategy, you know, we were offered different places to look at when the strategy, like you just read from some and Van had mentioned the strategy uh, that was provided to us, but it was I got the feeling that when it comes to policies, it was just going to be very truncated. It was just going to be like this policy that we're looking at right here without a whole lot of details. So are we moving now into, if we're going to detail number eight and talk about the various mechanisms and say exactly what they are, what we are going to be using, aren't we kind of moving back to where we should? Are we eventually going to talk about the Flemish housing strategy and some of the recommendations that have we've been given?
Well, Van has been talking about that. He he's been making various suggestions to incorporate some of that into this language.
Right, so which would make it, um, I know he 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 just did, um. I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around, uh, if are we going to make it very streamlined? This one part, or are we going to go into more details in all of it? Is that, is that, do you get what I'm saying?
That is the dilemma, absolutely.
Okay. I mean, it seems like if we're gonna get detailed in in certain areas, we should probably get pretty detailed in in other areas, this.
Well, again, the intent in starting and going through this process tonight was just to get it again, a little bit general feel for the current policies, knowing that each one of these policies could be vetted out, added to, you know, I I do foresee something a little bit more, you know, a little more elaborate than just listing, here's our current housing policies, one through nine. So I do think each of these will be vetted out a little bit more, similar to the examples that we've looked at. Uh, but again, we want to just whittle out the policies that we felt were applicable and those that weren't necessarily as needed at this point.
Okay.
So so I think we still vet out, so we can hit the last one, number nine. I think that's good for eight. We can hit number nine by see Mr. Hunt secure has a a hand up.
Uh, I was just gonna add Peggy that I again, going back to that comment about that we know that the low income issue is a big issue in my mind. The policies that we develop regarding that specifically, I could see that be in my mind anyway. Uh, you know, a little more detailed than some of these others. But I mean, that's just how I'm looking at it, but I'm and but I would agree with what Chris just said that yeah, I mean, these others, these first ones that we went through. Yeah, there is, I would suggest that we do put a little more detail to all of them. You know, moving forward.
Sure, thanks.
Uh, so this last one, the city will encourage the utilization through incentives for mixed use zoning to allow people to reside in closer proximity to employment opportunities. This touches a little bit on what uh, Gary just spoke about on kind of a specific or at least utilizing incentives. But it kind of mixes back up to where we split number five into two and talk specifically about uh, allowing people closer proximity. So how does everybody feel about leaving this independent, adding to this, maybe spinning it a little different direction or just combining it with the number five that we that we're splitting off that deals with where where housing would be allowed um, closer to employment opportunities?
Go ahead, Gina.
Yeah, to me, this one seems like one of the subsets of an earlier one where we're going to get more detailed about the specific ways we want to increase. I don't know, this one seems a little weird to me to be on its own, but I like it. I just think we could probably move it somewhere else.
Peggy.
And almost defined, uh, what does closer proximity to employment opportunities mean? How close is close? You know, what kind of opportunities? I know, I think it was Van that said, you know, trying to get people moving from. Lebanon to closer to where they work, so they're they're not driving quite so far. You know, is is that really what it's talking about, or is it, you know? I, but I agree with Gianna. It it doesn't, it's not a very good standalone. To me.
And my my opinion on it is that it's kind of odd that it's just focusing on proximity to employment opportunities because the mixed use zoning. Is often about a lot more than just living close to where you work. It's walkable neighborhoods and density and urban design and. And a lot of aspects that are go far beyond where you, how close to your desk you desk or counter that you live.
Yeah, the other part I'd add is. There's quite a bit of write up in the work that you can Northwest and about mixed use zoning. Especially in that office, the current office residential zone. And I know we've had a lot of conversations um between Pat and myself and and Beth. On the distinction between a mixed use zone and a like office residential zone where you, you know. Our current zoning for office residential, you have to have commercial on the first floor or in the front. And all of your residential has to be above or behind. And in the true sense of mixed use housing that Beth was talking about and writing about. Was really more where each individual lot could be either residential or commercial use, right? So you could have a commercial lot and right next to that could be a duplex, right next, that could be a small dentist's office. And right next to that could be a convenience store with an apartment up above. That's the kind of mixed use that. Um, the the narrative from the consultant kind of spells out, which is different than our current. What we currently consider mixed use, which is office residential, commercial on the bottom, residential up above. Um, so again, some direction there. And again, we can, we can read the narrative a little bit more from what you can Northwest put forward, look at the examples of the policies they put forward. But in my mind, this is really looking at that office residential zone. And what we need to do to to tweak and improve that that zone designation. Uh, Van's got a hand up.
Yeah, man.
Yeah, I would, I I agree with Chris and also what you said, Gary. And and Peggy to 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 respond to what you said, yeah, I don't think this had to do with what I was talking about. You know, people from Lynn County. Uh, but and I do agree that it's more, you know, living. Not necessarily just to do with work, but just living in proximity to the stores and the. You know, that kind of mixed use. So I agree with. Kind of all of you about that.
Well, we're at seven thirty-five. I think we've had a productive meeting and go through everything. I don't want to. Feel like we're wrapping things up and ready to turn the page, but I think I got a lot of good input. And I again, I think just help the process move along. Uh, next steps, I can take what I've heard, do some revisions, pull from Redmond, pull from Eco Northwest. You know, kind of look for examples where you've said to expand things. I'll look for examples where I feel like it's expanding it the way that we've talked about. Um, again, everything's got to kind of fall back to the findings that we've got. So I don't think that's contrary to. You know, some of the the findings and some of the recommendations, at least not too directly, at least not without clarifying why, where they contradict and why. Um, but I'm not hearing anything tonight that's really contradicting existing policies. I see clarification. Expanding uh that kind of language. So I think I've got enough to work with to put something pretty extensive together. Um, kind of a first draft, if you will, and bring that back to you, get that out in front of you. We've got a little bit of time. Um, your next meeting on the twenty-first will actually have a hearing for a subdivision that's been submitted. Uh, I think I talked about that with you at the last meeting, so. We're not going to try to lump a discussion about housing on the backside of that, uh, that that didn't go so well the last meeting, so. We'll just plan to have the hearing and then so that'll put us this time next month in April. Uh, that first meeting of April, we'll come back with that. And again, I'll try to give it out to you. You know, maybe a little extra time, maybe ten plus days or so before your meeting, so you've got time to review that. Make some good notes and then come prepared to to vet that out.
Um, be- before we say we're done with what we're doing here right now, though, I'd like to hear from anyone who feels like anything's missing. Well, I'm looking at the notes that I took from we went around and asked what people thought was important to put here, and I see several items that. Haven't really been addressed at all. So I think there's a few additions that we might uh consider as well. And before we go around. And ask that question, I was gonna ask Ruth what she had her hand up about.
Well, I have um two questions for Chris. One is uh the document, the agreement you mentioned with the county. Is that on our website somewhere? And my second question is, I don't believe we have any. Incentives in place today to encourage any any type of housing. Is that correct?
We don't. And I'm not sure if that's on the website. I'll look and see it's um.
Well, eh, maybe I'm thinking about this wrong, but again, I I kind of think that's about development of land that's not in the city of Falmouth. So it's not our jurisdiction. Am I wrong about that? It it really is, whether it's on the Benton County website, right?
Yeah, it's just, it's an agreement between the city and Benton County, but you're right, the bigger impact is on how does Benton County handle. Applications they receive for development when they're inside of urban growth banners of another city.
Yeah, right.
But we have a lot of stuff on our website, so maybe it's there.
Wouldn't be a problem. It's just jurisdiction. I think we need to keep clear that. Inside your urban growth boundary and outside of the city of Falmouth is really Benton County jurisdiction. Um, Gianna.
Um, yeah, when you were asking about things that were missing from this document. Um, it's important to me to have some sort of mention about environmentally. Environmental sustainability and building and in land use policies. Um, to me, that's a significant absence. Um, I think that needs to be taken into consideration with housing.
Can you, John, I'll just ask, can you give me a specific example, you mean, because sometimes. People use words like environmental sustain, like sustainability, and it can mean a lot of different things to different people. So when you say. Environmental sustainability for housing. Can you give me a couple of examples, so just so I'm in the right direction?
Yeah, absolutely. Like I'm looking at the Monroe, at the Monroe Plan. And how they talk about energy efficiency, simply promoting energy is efficient uh building design. Um, green infrastructure, that sort of things uh that is already that we. Um, have been in various places around town have been trying to encourage. Things like green spaces, energy conservation programs, things like that. Green building.
Thank you.
I would add to that, I I have a few things along those lines in my layout of policies, taking a few things from. Um, Redmond as well as a few things that I wrote and then. Sure, policy one point eleven. Yeah, and was something from the Sherwood policy also. Van?
This doesn't talk about uh the ones that we just went through, doesn't talk about. Funding. Uh, at all, so uh and then the the last. Number four in in the Echo Northwest talks about funding, so. I I think that's an area that we need to address as well.
I agree. Um, I'll I'll speak up for um Joseph, he he talked about trees. I talked about trees, Gianna talked about trees a little bit. And minimum landscaping requirements, um, and also some aspects of urban design. I have some notes here from Joseph about. Cars and commerce away from people in parks and that goes to, you know, um. I guess maybe taking a more careful look at the zoning and how you place. Different zones and connectivity between the zones, walkability pathways, um, all those sorts of issues.
Sidewalks.
What's that?
Sidewalks are nice.
Sidewalks, yeah, and and I think that plays into the housing chapter because, you know, like we saw with any development, how they. Where they locate things and how they're oriented have a big impact on that. And so if it's. Comprehensive plan, we'll look towards it.
Yeah, I think a kind of a general policy talks about connectivity, whether it be that. Businesses or recreational opportunities or schools or even interneighborhood uh connections. Um, as a. There's, there's some code language that helps there, but. We, it could be improved, right? So if we had a comprehensive plan policy that talked about. The importance of connectivity and trail systems and that connection piece. Then we can look to the municipal code and and make some changes, maybe some stronger requirements there in connectivity. To reflect that that policy. So if there's definitely room for improvement, that's a, that's a big part of it. And I think it's a. It's an expectation that people have today that maybe they didn't have thirty years ago or forty years ago. Um, you know, there, if you look at neighborhoods that were established twenty, thirty, forty years ago, you don't see the connecting bike path, you don't see the. The extra walkways, you just don't see that as much, uh, but most of the new stuff that goes in. It it's a requirement that you've got to connect to the existing. Uh, bike and ped uh system, which typically is sidewalks. But I think there's a step further than just sidewalks and connected through sidewalks, where you're talking about. Off the street connectivity that we can improve on.
As well as things like accessing from the backside of the property to allow the front side to not be interrupted like we've seen in. Uh, Darlene.
Um, I think that um what Chris was talking about is, you know, addressed in the Monroe. Livability section somewhat and and I too would really like to see those things sort of out there. They seem a little bit fluffy because they're, you know, not some of the technical language, but it's really, I think, important to. Think about, you know, community gardens and open space and community gathering places. Walking bike to um, you know, your daily needs. I think all of that's really important. Um, density to support transit. Well, our transit is pretty limited here, but it's something to keep in mind and um. So I I just think that it it would be good to include some of those things.
Yeah, that's okay if it's a little fluffy at the policy level, because again, then you can update your code. And be very specific in your code language on what's required based on having that policy, so. We can be a little fluffy at the policy level. Or general, more general than how you reference. Anything else?
Peggy.
I don't have a question about exactly this, but I wanted to log out. I have a question about the the map that we've been given. So let me know when I can ask that question.
Well, yeah, I I think I've got a lot to go from. I'm bringing you back a draft. It's not going to be a final draft, right? So this will be a draft. We can add to it, we can manipulate. We've got some time, right? I mean. We're, you know, Pat's gonna be a little upset when he comes back and we're we're two or three months behind on the schedule he put forward at the end of last year, but. That's okay, you know, we've got some time, we're we're doing all right, so um. But I think I've got plenty to work on in order to bring something back to you next month. And um, so that's really good. So thank you for the the input tonight and uh. Commissioner, you ever happen to answer your zoning question or your map question?
Yeah, the map question, there's, there's no, there's no lines for me to really point to, but um. It looks to me like it, the green, you know, where the green belt piece of property, the ninety acres off nineteenth street. You know, I I think I know, you know, where it is. It's right there off of nineteenth street as you head north. It's listed, yeah, the green belt land trust. It looks, it looks like it's listed as um PR Falmouth Residential. Am am I looking at the right? Um, piece of property?
No, it's uh industrial. It should be hashed purple.
Right, it's it's above, okay, let me. If if we're traveling from college onto nineteenth and you cross the railroad tracks.
Yep.
And then you you keep going north. And right at the corner of West Hills and um nineteenth street, it's. It's kind of the the crossed lines and it looks like it's kind of purple. And it says Falmouth Residential. It seems like it it like should be a color of its own because we really can't do anything with it, right?
Yeah, so the property you're referring, it's it's, I think it's larger than what you're thinking. It's everything north of the railroad tracks. On the east side of nineteenth street.
And right now it has, it has these lines through it.
Yeah, that's that's industrial, it's future industrial.
But in the middle of those lines, there's an I.
Right, the I is for industrial there.
Wait, I then I am completely looking at something different than what you're looking at because uh there's no I. There's.
It's in the next property over.
Looks like he's gonna pull it up and that'll probably make it easier for me.
Yeah, yeah, let me find it here. Uh, find the bigger ones so you can see it easier.
Oh, great. That's it, that's it. Okay, so where is the green belt?
Right here.
Okay, and so what, what do those lines? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's industrial property that's inside the urban growth boundary, outside city limits, so it's for future industrial use.
So it's, is it still, I mean, it's not included on any of our inventory because we virtually can't do anything with it.
When we did the economic opportunities analysis.
Right.
We identified this property as a non-developable property. It's a con-constrained property because of the. Um, the. It's not an easement, it's a, well, I think it is a a non-development easement of sorts, so there's a. It it did not get included in our inventory of.
Okay.
Available industrial land. At some point when we do a rezone, we'll we'll probably look for some other way to identify that other than. The same hashed industrial striping that you see for the rest of those lots.
Okay, great, good, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, and I didn't do much of staff for, again, we just kind of talked through stuff a couple of weeks ago, so I didn't provide something new. I'll I'll have a staff report. At the conclusion of um our meeting here in a couple of weeks. But I'm happy to answer any other questions people have got. We're we're seven fifty now, so are there any other questions hanging out there?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you for doing this. I don't envy you.
No.
Yeah, thank you. I I don't, this made at least this first step a lot more simple.
Thanks to, thanks to all of you for all that thought that you put into these issues. It's very helpful.
Yeah, the direction is really helpful. I I read through everything and I have my own. You know, way of seeing things and my own biases and my own background, so it is nice to get full perspective and to hear from you on the direction you want to go, so. Um, that's good. I'll I'll get typing stuff up over the next couple of weeks and actually, truth be told. I'll probably hit this tomorrow while it's fresh in my mind. And then uh put it aside for a little bit. I've got the staff report for that subdivision I've got to work on here the next week, so. You know, always, always plenty to do. Um, I will report back, I guess, by way of quick report. You know, always, always plenty to do. Um, I will report back, I guess, by way of quick report. Um, I have started emailing Pat, um, applications, and he's working from home now, so he's officially back to work this week, he's able to type. Um, feeling pretty good and good spirits, and so he already emailed back a couple of lot line adjustments that got approved earlier today, and so happy to have him back and and work on some of our files. I know that Monroe had a bit of a backlog and a Dare Village, and the others have all got kind of backlogged a little bit, and so he's has plenty of work to do. So I'm feeding him to things a little bit slowly, but, uh, nice to have him back and at least to a partial capacity and being able to get some planning work done for us, so glad he's feeling better and able to work. And I anticipate, I haven't talked to him yet, you may let me run the, uh, subdivision still. Um, but I anticipate bringing him back into our comprehensive plan discussions as we move forward with them as well, so. I looking forward to having some more help there as well.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.